All right. Good evening. Welcome to the special town meeting for Thursday, October 23, 2025. A quorum being present. I will call the meeting order. The return of the warrant shows has properly been served. Registars, what is the last number you anticipate up there? Pardon? 123? 181. Excellent. More than a quorum. Just jot that down. As custom, I'd ask you to join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, law.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to introduce the people at the head table. You know, most of them. Town administrator, Mike Mason, select board, Randy Isner chair, Molly Keegan, Amy Parsons, David Phil, and Jane Devon Smith could not make it tonight. Town council is Matt Proventure from Mead, Tallerman, and Costa. Town clerk, Jessica Spankable. Finance committee, Amy Fiden, chair, Andy Klopaki, Paul Benjamin, Peter Matusko, and Paul McCretsky, and I am your moderator, Kirk Watley. Do we have any dignitaries here tonight that I was not made aware of? State representatives, state senators? No, excellent. I didn't mean that in a partisan way, just we get to move on. Now go over the decorum of the meeting. Most of you've heard this before. The meeting will be conducted per town meeting time rules. If you wish to speak to an article, please approach one of the microphones and wait to be recognized by the moderator. State your name and residential address. Once you have been recognized to speak, keep all comments relative to the article or motion at hand. Do not refer to any previous speaker by name. Please use previous speaker instead. You may speak as many times as you feel necessary, but please give others a chance to speak before returning to the microphone. If necessary, I'll ask you to wait until others have had a chance to speak. Direct your comments to the moderator. Limit your comments to three minutes or at the discretion of the moderator. All amendments, and this is important, all amendments must be submitted in writing to the moderator as soon as the amendment is offered. And please silence all cell phones. You can put them on vibrate or silent. That would be appreciated. To start off with, I'll entertain a motion to others who are not registered voters in the town of Hadley. Be allowed to address the town meeting from time to time for information. Is there a second? All those in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed, passed unanimously. Mother's Club. Where is that handout? Here we go. Nobody sticks around at the end of the meeting to hear it, so I'll put it out now. Mother's Club is doing a holiday fair November 22nd from nine to three, right here. Vendors raffle Santa will be here as well as a bake sale. If you have any questions, please see the Mother's Club in back, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions that you've got. And with that, we will kick in and get things going. I'll read the article in motion form, ask for a second, and then there will be discussion. Article one, move the town vote to amend fiscal year 2026 general fund budget by changing amounts between budgets as shown in the handout entitled amendments to FY26 omnibus budget as presented on October 23, 2025, special town meeting and incorporated by reference herein. Is there a second? Recommended by the select board five zero, recommended by the finance committee five zero. And I believe Linda is going to be addressing this. Linda, the stage is yours.
All right. Is this on? So not up. But yet, okay. Oh, I just had to get closer. Sorry. Okay. Um. We pass, you might remember this from our annual town meeting in spring. We passed a three page, almost $23 million budget from the general fund that was passed in May. So what I'd like to do, what we're voting on tonight is the amended budget, which is the handout from the back. It's a one page showing money coming in and out of all the various departments. You'll see at the bottom of the page, the differences between what is, what's coming out and what's going back into different departments. They equal out, so there's actually no change to the budget's bottom line. So just start with, just because so much has happened between the annual town meeting and now, I want to give a very succinct description of what happened with the FY26 budget. I know this might be repetitive for some of you, which is why I'm going to try and keep it very, very much to the point. It was an ordinary budget year as far as doing our revenues and the finance committee meeting with departments in the span of two or three months, the select board going over it. And right as we're wrapping up the budget, we have the first of three things that really tripped us up. First was very late in the process, we found out that the health insurance was increasing by 18%, which was very unexpected based on the many years before that. That was a $330,000 increase. The impact of that on the budget that we were doing was that we needed to use free cash to cover that additional amount. So instead of our usual 500,000 or so that we use to balance the budget, now we're using 830,000 and $850,000 in free cash, which is not something that we really wanted to do, but it's what we need to get through and we'll see what happens. The second thing that happened is, is changes in the, and our planning for the ambulance budget. We had had for a two-year period, we were funding a ramped up ambulance budget that was funded separately from free cash and then stabilization, the purpose of which was to provide an additional level of ambulance service to the town and more prompt service in some, in many cases. And for two years, this was ramped up and the projections when we began the process was that there would be the revenues coming in from the ambulance fees that would more than cover or at least cover the ambulance budget, and that's what we were going on. That's not what happened. And we had the money to put into it because if you remember back at the time was we were coming out of COVID. We had like $1.4 million in free cash. And as you all know, who make investments, you have to put in, you have to, it takes money to make money. And we thought this is a good opportunity. We'll put the money in and then we will have a department. We'll have better service for the town and we will have it also covered by the, by the fees that came in. Disappointingly, we got different projections just about March of this year, and that put us in yet a second difficult position of how are, what are, how are we going to handle this? We could not just slip it back into the budget because of where we were in the process. And then the third thing that happened, once we passed that budget without funding the ambulance and with accommodating the extra 3, 330,000 is we got yet another notice of another 20% increase in health insurance, which meant an additional 486,000. And we were out of free cash. There was nothing really that we could do about that. And the budget had passed and we were in summertime and this was, you know, this was, this was the moment where some things had to change. So I'll, so those are the, the three things that we were dealing with at once. So I do want, I do want to say, because you know, I've read a lot about what people say. If this was a business, your business, and this was happening to you, you could turn on a dime and make some changes. You say, we're going to do this, we're going to cut that, we're going to make some changes and deal with it right away. We're not a business, we're a town. It's not a decision of the select board or the finance committee or the paid administrators in the town to say, we're not going to have an ambulance anymore. We're going to cut these people and we're going to lay it off and we're going to take care of this real quick. No, we're a town. We have to come back to you to see how you want to handle it. Do you want to fund it? Do you not want to fund it? So it came to the town. We held forums, we presented the information, went out to vote, and the answer was, we don't want to raise taxes to fund these extra things. So that's fine. Now we're back. We have an answer. And now we have to revise the budget for a couple of reasons. We have to pay that increased insurance anyways, because that's the bill we have to pay it, which means there has to be other trimmings in the budget in order to accommodate that. And we're not going to continue to sink free cash into the budget, so it's not going to be out of increases. So that's where we are. And if we can go, if you want to see where the cuts have come from, the first slide up here, and it's also on the back of your budget sheet, just flip it over and that's the top slide. This is showing all of the different, the town's budget by government area, and it's showing where the cuts were made in the final column. You'll see a general government, public safety, education. This is where the cuts were came from. General government, looks like it didn't have a cut, but if you see the asterisks and look at the bottom, that's because one of the things we did was add $55,000 to make it 75,000 for the finance committee reserve fund. Because, because the closer you cut everybody's budgets, the bigger the risk is that it's going to have been cut too far and there needs cushion, there needs to be room for the finance committee to, to bail out a department who gets into that kind of situation. So the only two that weren't cut were these 500, 600. That's because those are pretty small departments. You're cutting, cutting there means decimating a program and we're not at that point yet. So when we go to the next slide, and this, this is a little more specific. I just think these are easier for you to follow than department by department showing negative and plus. This is showing how the cuts were handled. In the, in the top line, there were five positions that needed to be, to be eliminated across the board, saving 248,815. And you can see the five departments are listed there. Because this was a possibility, as positions opened up, they were not filled, meaning those are positions that are not going to be funded, but they're also not currently occupied. So they will not trigger yet additional expenses of unemployment insurance of payment. Because if we lay someone off, you have to pay unemployment until they find another job. And that would probably mean we'd have to lay off yet more people so that we could afford that. So that was in the, that was in the plans for several months. And so we're able to make that cut. Another thing that happened, and we do this every year, is because the union contracts and the comp study changed. Whoops, and decisions about COLA, they come late in the game after we've already done the budget. So we put a, we put a line item in the select board budget to cover all of those changes. And then at the fall town meeting, we take out of that budget and put into other budgets to provide for those additional increases in wages. So that's $109,000, which resulted in a cut from the select board budget of almost 95,000 to cover that amount. The school department, this is very unusual that we went, we actually made a mid-year cut in the school department. This is very much because of that much of the health insurance is due, it's due to the school employees as much as it is to the town employees. And so they came up with, with a fair share to contribute back into the budget in order to accommodate their share. And you see on the next line then is the increase in the insurance budgets, insurance and benefits, 391,150. If you're wondering why it isn't the 486,000 that I mentioned earlier, that's an annual amount is the 486,000. But this latest increase of 20% is kicking in October 1. It just did kick in. So for 26, we only have to fund it, that additional increase for three quarters of the year. But I promise you, it's going to be back up at the 486,000 increase for FY27, at least, at least. That's if they level fund and I promise you, they won't do that. While we're at it, we had a few other changes that had to be made that resulted in some increases because contracts. What else? A cost of, a cost of elections, because we've had, that's been an increase for us postage. A few things like that resulted in $35,000 increase, increases. I mentioned before, the next one, the finance committee fund increasing by $55,000. And then generally to offset the increases in contracts, et cetera, we have decreases in other expenses that we were able to cut back along the way. So the bottom line is there are, there's no change to the bottom line. We had to do these adjustments in order to make the necessary changes, but there is no additional free cash being used, no additional funding, and no additional personnel, no additional hours in this, in this budget. So we're hoping that you'll recognize this as, as, as the work that it was to, to come up with something as fair as possible across the board. And we will then, we get through this and we're going to start working on 27 right away and see what we can do to once again have a budget that's within the revenues.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, if you have a question, you can approach the microphone.
So I have several questions.
Name and address.
John Kinchla, 206 Bay Road. So this is the first time I've seen this piece of paper right here, and I think most of you would say the same thing. It would be nice if this type of thing was posted on the website or somewhere publicly before we come to a meeting that has this much impact on our various departments in town. One thing I would like to know is how much free cash is there?
We have July, as of July 1st, we have certified free cash of 749,000, although we have some of that is in question with some late found information. So it may, it may only be closer to 600,000. That however, is more than we were talking about at the forums. We are quite concerned that it was going to be under 500,000. So we're, we're relieved to have it 600,000 or higher at this point.
Bear with me. You, you, you mentioned the ambulance shortfall. What was that shortfall amount?
What we had asked for in the override was I think something 586,000, I think that we were asking for. And that did not include, that did not include the benefits attributable to the firefighters, because we don't really do that with anybody. I think if we'd only gone, well, yeah, it didn't. So at that point, we were looking for 586,000.
So what attempts were made to mitigate that shortfall?
Asking for an override would have been the, the easiest thing. That was number one. Number two, I think we were talking at some point about adding in free cash, except that we did end up having to use so much for free cash. And that is a process that simply has to end. It's not something, a decision that we're just making here, but it's something we've heard loud and clear from taxpayers too. We just can't use additional money. There have been the positions, I guess, I'm not sure where I have it here. Maybe, maybe you haven't seen it, but it's actually, there are two positions that are not being replaced in fire department and two individuals that are being laid off. So we were at one point looking, thinking that it had to be five positions, which would, but I think that the efforts that have been made include changing how the scheduling of the officers are. I'm sure I don't, I don't know a lot about the details of how it works, but changing the shifts, the number of people on a shift, the length of the shifts, and through that process over the last several weeks, they were able to retain six firefighters as opposed to the five that were originally contemplated.
And what is the overall budget for the fire department?
Okay, what, what we voted in the spring for the fire department was 926,455 plus. In addition, we had the revenues that had been collected, the ambulance revenues that had been collected over a period of 15 months up to that point of 94,750. So that's almost another 100,000. So doing it in my head, it looks like we're, it's about a million 26,000? Math people? I think that's it. Yeah. I think you want, you want the two together. So because, because that almost 100,000 covers at least one additional firefighter. This distinction over the, over time, when we started the, when the ambulance process was started, we had them as separate budgets. And I'm afraid it's one of those things, as well meaning as it was, it's gotten confusing because we had the ambulance had its salaries and the fire had its salaries. And of course, I'm just working with numbers and it turns out that those are not individuals in one department or another. What it is, is they're individuals being paid out of the two departments. So beginning with our next budget, there will only be a single budget for our fiery EMS fighters. So that's why I'm letting, I'm adding them together here because that is the intention. In addition, there's $180,000 separate ambulance contract, which is outside, which is in its own budget, which is what we pay action ambulance for the level one, level A, level, A level of ambulance services that they have been providing for several years and are continuing to provide for us going forward.
So that being said, the shortfall was 586 on the fire overall budget. And I believe there's two positions that are unfilled right now. So that closes that gap. What would it take to bring that department whole for the rest of the year?
What you would, what you would need to do is get the salary levels of the four positions that you would be filling back. And maybe I'm not the one to speak to this. It might be better from, I think that the chief is here. You'd want those four, if you're, if that's what you're talking about, restoring it to what it was? What it has been, the four new positions?
Probably leaving the two that are vacant, vacant.
Oh, okay. To get the two. So it would be, it would be, it would be those two salaries. But there were another component of the 586, I should say, that's not purely salary. A lot of the, we had expenses that were in the budget that are there by reason of running an A level ambulance service. So those were expenses that we probably would not need to recoup out of that 586. If what you were planning to do was have a, an ambulance, I mean, a fiery EMS service and have it all in the fire budget and sort of let go of, at least for now, let go of the, the plans for the A level. So.
Chief Spankable, could you come up with one of the microphones, please? I think the chief is probably the best one to answer the question for that. So chief, I've been, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe your question is, what would we need to remain to keep the two people that are planning to be laid off to supplement the fire department? Give me a good round number.
We, well, at the last finance committee meeting in order to, at the last finance or finance committee meeting, I had made a request to fund that, I believe it was 235,000 to keep our full-time staffing, but that didn't include the deputy chief and the lieutenant's position that was eliminated. The 535,000 you're talking about was the salaries and expenses for the EMS side, which is still the fire department. This, this isn't a separate division. This isn't two firefighters in the fire department and two firefighters sitting on an ambulance. It's, it was the one budget. And it was put into the special account because it was being funded with a special revenue account with the receipts that were coming in from us responding to medical calls. So we were told it was about 94,000, I think we brought in. We have approximately 25,000 remaining now that we brought in since the beginning of the fiscal year. And that basic ambulance, again, it's only going to second calls. So when we said we haven't been, we haven't brought in what was anticipated, we haven't gone to full ALS yet. We're only covering second calls for service for the town. So action ambulance is our primary ambulance is the one who's going out the door at the ALS level. They're the ones that are bringing in upwards of $880,000 a year in cash. So that's, that's what we were moving ourselves towards.
So that 200 and something is what you would need to keep the two people that are planning on being laid off?
The two, I think, I, again, I wish, I didn't realize there was going to be questions on this tonight. Because it was, I've already notified the union on it, but the two employees, the straight employees right now, Linda and I work some numbers. We were still coming up to, we were still coming up about just over $100,000 short. So we came up with some ways to, to cover that so that we wouldn't have to eliminate a sixth, a fifth position. Again, I think the 235,000 that we were requesting was going to cover us through the end of fiscal year 26.
Thank you, chief. That answered the question, or?
It does. That's the beginning of meeting. I think I'd like to add, so full disclosure, I'm on the fire department as a call firefighter. I think I'd like to add, so full disclosure, I'm on the fire department as a call firefighter. I'm pretty bothered by what's been decided here over the last eight weeks. And let's look at the $22 million budget, could we? We've got a statement that no more free cash will be used, but I see $85,000 in free cash being used. That brings us to $150,000 for the fire department to close that gap. Out of a $22 million budget, we can't find $150,000 to fund these guys through the rest of the year.
You just got to get close to it.
Oh, is that better?
No.
That better? No, I think it's.
They get turned off.
How's that? Oh.
Too close together. Yeah.
So. All right, I need two hands for this. So we're at $150,000. We're getting close. Again, this warrant is on the website, but there's absolutely no discussion on the website about what this article two entails, unless you listen in on the meeting that bless all of you goes for several hours and we don't, not everybody has time for that. It would be really nice to have a synopsis on the town's website about what all of this is. But I did watch enough of the meeting to know that we've got a building demolition for a DPW that may or may not get built. That's $75,000 being borrowed. So, right, that's outside the scope of what we can do for the fire department because we can't borrow for salaries. But just to color your vision here, we also have an attempt to, do some engineering work to tie into the Amherst sewer system, which I have no problem with. But the driving force behind that is to rezone parts of Route nine, namely the Hampshire Mall, so that we can add 200, 300 units of housing, which is fine. But again, we want to expand our enterprise here on Route nine, but we don't want to fund an essential leg of that enterprise, namely the fire department. Those 300 units of housing are going to require calls, smoke alarms, CO alarms, you name it, fire, you know, sprinkler running, whatnot. It's going to be 24/7. We've also rezoned some property here in Hadley for senior housing on North Maple Street. Again, senior housing is going to require services. You're going to need a fire department. We have some senior housing coming up on the west side of Route nine, west end of Route nine. Once again, your enterprise is going to need funding. So are you going to tell me tonight that for $150,000, we can't close that gap and keep our essential people? And by the way, our fire department, although it's referred to as full-time, is absolutely not full-time. Two firefighters on duty, 24/7 is the, it's not the bare minimum. It's below the bare minimum. And the people doing that job do it knowing that they're taking risks. Okay. I'm not going to get into the scenarios that could happen with just two firefighters on a truck, but trust me, you don't want to see that scenario at your own house. Okay. So it's time that we step up when we fund these guys. They're sticking their neck out for us and we need to do the same.
I had a, I had a quick question for, if it's okay. Sorry, hi. So for the previous speaker and for the chief as well, I think we just brought up 150,000, 180,000. And I was also curious if that also included the nearly depleted overtime budget as well? And what a good number would look like? You know, above and beyond the 150,000 or 180,000? I don't know.
So here's the thing about overtime. You've got minimum staffing, right? When you're staffed at the bare minimum as it is and somebody calls out or goes on vacation, you need to pay overtime to fill that shift. And these people are entitled to vacations, just like the rest of us. So if someone's on their week long vacation, somebody else has to fill that spot at an OT rate. It's simple math. And the contract demands it and you know, basic good employment demands it. So you, if you want to reduce overtime, I hate to tell you, you've got to increase headcount. You need a floater or you need three people on shift so that when one calls out, you can still run that shift on straight time with two people. Because in Hadley, we run two people minimum 24/7. Most towns, all the towns around us are four people minimum, well, or more, go to Northampton or Amherst. But two people minimum is the bare bone. So when someone calls out or, or two people call out, now you've got to cover two spots at overtime. So there's no way to control overtime when you don't have something extra built into your system. And right now, the fire department does not have any something extra. The extra is the call force and we'll get text messages saying, can you fill this shift? Can you fill that shift? Maybe we can, some of us can, but a lot of us can't because we're also very busy. So you know, the reality is we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. And sometimes you just have to step up and do the right thing and, and, and pay that bill. So.
Which is why I was looking for a more concrete number.
Well, before I go, I'm almost done. Before I go, for article two, we've got 1.4 million dollars of funding all bundled up together. So you're either going to vote it up or you're going to vote it down. And I've seen this happen before in this town where certain things are bundled together and you're either going to vote it up or you're going to vote it down. In my opinion, if you're voting on funding, it needs to stand on its own legs. It should be a separate item. So the chapter 90, the Harts Brook Bridge, the sewer asset, not that these aren't all legitimate expenses, but they should be on their own standalone article so that we can vote it up and down and discuss it. So that's all I have. Thank you.
It's my discretion. Okay. Let you in on a secret from town meeting time, so to speak. So that you know, and again, we're still on article one, but I want to very quickly address article two to the previous speaker's comments about breaking it out. We can divide the items in article two and pull them out and vote on them one by one. I simply need a motion, a second and a majority. And we can do that in article two. So I'm putting that out there. Right now, I'm going to go back to article one. Are there any other additional questions or comments on article one?
Tony Fiden, Cold Spring Lane, just one quick comment. The, this is listed, just, just so we're clear, this is listed as a public safety, as a category, but all, all of the cuts are from the fire department. It's, it's not totally public safety. It's fire department there, because I understand that there are zero cuts from the police department. In fact, there are three cadets at the academy right now who are going to be rehired. These are not new positions, but it, it, it could have been possible to delay that, those, those positions. Or if you're going to make cuts to public safety, do it evenly. I'm not sure I understand why the fire department took the entire hit. The police department, zero, and it's going back to a full force. So that's just a general comment. And going forward, I hope that whatever, whatever we do in 27, that if we're talking about public safety, let's look at all the public safety.
Yes, Linda.
I just, I just want to point out the public safety also includes, there was a position eliminated in dispatch. And that was a hard fought position to get in there because those are very highly strained positions. And another cut was in a full-time position in, that's also part of public safety. And that has short-staffed that department as well. I'm not wanting to argue with you. I just want to clarify, you said public safety was only fire, but it was two additional positions that were eliminated.
So also I will make a comment, another additional comment. The three individuals that are on the police force are in the academy. They are budgeted for, they are covered, you know, with the, within the budget already. I also will say that the police department receives almost 200, almost 20,000 calls a year, where the fire department receives about 2,000. So I, I just wanted to throw that out there as well as additional facts and information.
Bill, are you speaking as planning board or citizen?
Both.
Okay.
Built to wire 388 River Drive and a member of the planning board. I did want to just put the prev, a previous speaker's comments on future housing in context. He's not wrong on the numbers, but that's not an FY26 problem. It may not even be an FY27 problem. The projects that he mentions will be coming. One has been filed with the planning board, probably months away from getting planning board approval, much less financing and groundbreaking. The others he mentioned have not even filed anything with us. And the potential for multiple dwellings in the Hampshire Mall area is a project that is understudied by the planning board. It is nowhere near a bylaw that's ready to go forward. So he's not wrong. There is housing coming. It will be potentially a revenue gain on taxes. It may potentially be a revenue drain and other resources, but it's not the kind, it's not really before us now. It's next fiscal year or maybe the fiscal year after that.
Hi, Devois Jacobson for East Commons Drive. I'd like some further clarification, please, regarding education. The $200,000 cut, it says salaries and expenses. Can you clarify, please?
Someone from the school committee here? Here we go.
So I believe the question was what?
Just your name and position.
Is that correct?
Name and position.
Sure. So we had two resident, I'm sorry.
For you.
My name and position.
Yes.
Oh, nice. Just some rando, just walking up here, saying whatever I want, making stuff up. No, now you'll feel even better. I'm Annie, I'm responsible for your kids. Annie McKenzie, Superintendent of Schools.
Thank you, Annie.
So the funding was originally allocated to positions, people resignations that we won't fill. One, a tuition for an out of district placement that the student ended up not being placed in Hadley, in an adoptive home in Hadley. So we see some savings and any additional money would then come out of school. Take it from school choice to return it to the town. The logic that the select board and Mike, the, the man with many jobs and Linda and finance committee have about this, certainly it's hard. It's hard for everybody. It, it also is a reasonable request in that school department is the largest department. Healthcare is the greatest driver of the cost increases. And so therefore, the school department is make sure of that.
Any other questions or comments on article one? That microphone's busy tonight.
Seth, Seth Isman, 225 Middle Street. I want to ask not about the fire department and not about the schools. Other positions are being cut. I don't know exactly what they are because that's not indicated. They are positions that have been filled in the past and that the town has benefited from. And my question is, who's going to do the work? What is the town going to lose by cutting those positions?
David Phil.
So some of those positions, there was two from the highway department. There's a building maintenance position and then there's another highway worker. So those two positions will not be filled going forward. And then there was additional help in the building inspector's office, which was also cut. And then of course, you know, not talking about the fire department, but dispatch. And then there was another person from the HR department that was also cut. As far as going forward, obviously there may be some change in services in some of those departments that, you know, the people in the building department can only approve so many permits and do so many inspections with the staff they have. And the reality is that we put forward an override that failed. And so we move forward under that direction from the voters. And so we, we make the best of what we have to work with. And that's what the highway department, the DPW is going to have to work with is they're going to have to get as much work as they can done within their budget and within their personnel allotment.
Thank you.
Hi.
Please.
Does this work?
If you could pull the mask down, it makes it easier to hear you and understand.
Sure.
Thank you.
Whoops. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Lisa Wolf. I live at 110 Middle Street and I would offer two comments. One is, I was at the last meeting, the big one, where there was lots of yelling and stuff. And there were some really interesting comments online after that about the type of town that we want to live in. Okay. And the type of place that we want, the type of community that we want to support. I am also an emergency nurse. I am a nurse scientist. I study geriatric care. And I can tell you that Western Massachusetts has an incredibly high proportion of people over the age of 65. I'm almost there myself. I look here, I see you, my gray haired compatriots, right? And the thing is, we need healthcare. We need the availability of services in our town if we want people to stay here. If we want people to come and raise their families here, we have to provide an environment where people feel like they are cared for, right? And that's all of us taking care of each other through this mechanism. So as we kind of move forward, I would ask you to really consider what kind of place you want to live in. Do you want to live in the place where we all work together to take care of each other? Do we want to live in a neoliberal libertarian nightmare? Right? So that's my comment. Thank you so much.
Hang on for one sec.
Hi, Nancy Bandman, 17 High Meadow Road. I just have been the last two weeks, just really feel the need to speak about how important the fire department is and our EMTs. I've seen them on our streets. I've seen them in the community. I've seen them for years, very, very dedicated. And I believe now that there are minimums of safety that we should not go below on the previous speaker's comments about what town do we, what kind of town do we want to live in? And I believe that given the risks of the chemicals in our houses and all of the substances and the difficulties, when someone has to go to a fire call, I can't imagine just two people being there with equipment and the risks involved. So I think that's just, there are minimums that we just have to keep up. And then let's think about too, not just Hadley, but how do we fit in the greater community? What happens in Amherst or Northampton? If they call us and we say, the firefighters say, well, no, sorry, we've only got two people on and we've got a fire up on Breckenridge. You know, so you have to imagine that we live in a larger community. It's really important to be clued in to, to that as well. And then I think too, that the two positions that are about to be laid off went to the fire academy. And so all of that training and support that they have experienced, go out the door with them and leave our fire department as well. And that needs to be taken into consideration. Those are trained EMTs, firefighters. And then the two vacant positions in addition to those include a deputy, a deputy and a lieutenant, I believe. And those are supportive in terms of handling inspections as well as helping the chief with other important responsibilities of the department. So you take those away, and again, from the previous speaker, who has to handle all of that? But it falls to very few people. So I think that's just a. So I think that's just a really important thing to think about, that where are the burdens of all of these cuts going to land? And when I think of safety, that is just foremost in my mind. And I think we need to support the firefighters and EMTs. Thanks.
David.
Uh, David Phil, thirty-nine Knightly Road, speaking.
I did finance committee, the select board or yourself?
Just, just me.
Just you, okay.
I just want to make clear that the changes that we're making tonight are to get us through June thirtieth of next year only. We're not talking about FY twenty-seven. We're not talking about going forward. If the override had passed, we wouldn't be having any of these conversations. We wouldn't be making any of those, any of these decisions tonight. But the override did not pass, so we're working within the budget that we were given. The changes that we're making, like I said, only get us to June thirtieth of next year. If, even if we pass this as written now and we make it to June thirtieth of next year and nothing else changes, we're probably going to need additional cuts or additional found revenue somewhere to make the FY twenty-seven budget work. So although everyone would like to keep all the firefighters and not lay off, uh, you know, somebody from inspections, it's, it doesn't work within our current budget and the current amount of money that the town has. So I feel for the guys getting laid off. I get it. We didn't want to have to make those decisions, but that's what we're left with here to get us through the end of the fiscal year. FY twenty-seven, probably looking even worse, in my opinion, for making ends meet and falling within the budget. So just, this is just a short term solution. And like Linda said, as soon as this passes, we're going to start working on FY twenty-seven. And there's going to have to be a lot of hard discussions and questions about what services remain, what services do not, what cuts are made, what, you know, what do we keep? So we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but this gets us just to June thirtieth of next year.
Name and address again, sorry.
John Kinchla, two oh six Bay Road. So, okay, I, I hear what you're saying, David. I know you guys are in a, in a tough place. I would like to amend Article Two to add a line item for the fire department out of free cash.
Can't do Article Two yet. We're still in Article One.
Before we get to that, what I would like to mention, there's a ninety-four thousand dollar inflow from the ambulance right now, correct? Okay, but that was money that came in. To this stage.
Yes, at a period of about fifteen months, um ninety-four thousand five hundred had come in. That was through town meeting. Since then, we have about another twenty-five and I don't know what to expect. We don't know what to expect for the rest of the year, depending on how they're able to staff the BLS ambulance that goes out. But we expect that it's not being allocated tonight, the twenty-five thousand. What we were planning to do is wait till annual town meeting and then see whether uh it made more sense to apply it to twenty-six or to have it available to apply to FY twenty-seven to help fund uh into the next year.
So there's potentially revenue from the ambulance and.
I, I think you're trying to, and then just talking to town council, we both agree. It sounds like you're trying to make a motion to amend Article One, which would be allowed at this time because Article Two deals with capital expenditures. Or are you addressing something specific in Article Two?
I got ahead of myself when I went to amend. So I think I would like to tack this into Article Two. But, but my point is, and, and Mike Chief Spankable referred to this briefly, but I think what people are missing here is we've built this ambulance business and it's operating at the basic level right now, which means when you go out on a call, you're getting, I don't know, half of what you would get for an ambulance call that's at the advanced life support level. The real money is at the advanced life support level, if you want to look at it that way. Right now, the ambulance company we use collects all of that ALS revenue. But our ambulance service and our people are like right there. They're at the threshold to get qualified as an advanced life support ambulance. So it's been two plus years of work to get here and it's, a lot of it is dictated by state regulations. But here we are. We've built this business and we're about to take off. So if we cut two people away and we've already essentially lost two positions, now we're cutting two existing positions, that business is folded. It's over. You've sunk money into that. You've spent it. It's gone. That investment came to no fruition, right? If you elect to further fund the fire department through the rest of this fiscal year through June, there's a much better chance that that advanced life support business that we've built will start to generate income and start to offset these costs that we're involved with getting it started. So the way I look at it, we are this close to getting there and now would really not be a good time to pull the rug out from under it. So I guess I'll be back for when Article Two is introduced.
I have a, I was wondering actually a point of clarification because what you're looking for is an operational and Article Two is capital only.
Right. So Linda, could you, could you step up, Linda, and explain the difference between Article One and Article Two? Where Article Two is, is, is capital?
Okay.
Okay, okay. Okay, so you have, you have a motion to amend Article One?
So I guess it would be Article One.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Cause I would be asking to fund those positions out of free cash.
Go ahead and read it.
Stabilization, okay. 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 The other component to this would be, I would be looking to break Article Two into individual votes.
Okay, well, that's, that's to come down the road. But once you read your motion, so I can hear it.
I would motion to add two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars to the fire department budget to fund existing fire positions through the end of the fiscal year. The money would be from free cash.
Is there a second? There are seconds. Okay, can I, I need a motion. We have to vote on the mo- on the uh proposed amendment before we can vote on Article One. I'll read it in case you didn't hear it before. I move to amend the motion as follows. Add two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to the fire department budget to fund existing fire positions through the end of fiscal year. Money will be from free cash and we have a second for that. Anybody care to? We have seconds, yep. Anybody care to comment on that?
I have a question.
Yes.
So the two hundred and thirty-five, so before we had heard a hundred and fifty and then we heard a hundred and eighty. And I'm also wondering because the overtime budget is a separate bucket. So I'm just wondering how this, how the amount that we're asking for right now is um divided out between the buckets.
Mike, please. Chief Spankable, excuse me, I should be more respectful. If you had an extra two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, what would it mean? For the, not for you, for the department.
Got it. Uh, the current FY twenty-six overtime budget was funded only at thirty thousand because half of it wasn't funded through that special rev- that special account. So that's why it looks like we've over expended, which we have at this point, by about two thousand dollars. So the two hundred and thirty-five was the bare minimum to get us through with a very low overtime. It was also, it was going to be a discussion with the union on how we could possibly modify the contract to allow us not to have the minimum. And then myself or Call Force folks would be asked to step into those roles to try and cover those shortfalls. So it was going to the union to work with them. And I can tell you, the union's been very, very much in favor of saving positions. They want to save positions. So, you know, again, if, if this doesn't come to fruition, I already given them a letter for the layoffs. So we are going to be going into bargaining. And again, they want to save positions. That's what this union is about.
So the two hundred and thirty-five thousand, how many positions?
Yeah, I, I don't have the breakdown of what overtime it would be, but it would be for, it would be for the four positions and for the uh, what minimal overtime we could get.
Does that answer your question?
Again, it's, that's a Band-Aid for, again, the, the problem that we're going to have is, like David Phil stated, FY twenty-seven is another whole beast. So again, if we're doing this, then, and you know, we're coming back next year and it's going to be double the number of people that may have to get laid off. So we might be back in the same predicament. So again, do I want to lay off firefighters? Absolutely not. I've been working really hard on this whole program for a long time. And I think it's what was in the best interest of the town. It wasn't intended to put a burden on anyone. It was to provide public safety. So again, I, I appreciate that. And is it absolutely great that somebody's standing up for that? Yes, um, but that would be the bare minimum to, to get us through FY twenty-six. And that's with no expenses for the ambulance side of it. There would be no additional expenses added.
Amy, does that answer your question?
Would it be okay? I just wanted to address um just the BLS ALS issue um that, that was raised. I just wanted to remind folks that the uh, during the budget process, the select board made a very difficult decision to pull the plug on that program. Part of the reason for that um is that we really recognized that we hadn't been accounting for the capital requirements going forward. Because once we do, uh, and, and this may be an eventuality for our town. Once we do pull ALS fully in-house um to obtain the revenue, as the speakers um are talking about, with that comes the cost of all of the ongoing equipment, et cetera. And that capital plan um has not been built out at this point. So, you know, we recognize that should that be something that we want to bring to town meeting in the future, we want to make sure that we have fully loaded, accurate uh data in that regard. So there was another business reason that we chose not to move forward with that program up just at this time.
Any other questions or comments on the motion to amend?
I had one thing to add.
Okay.
If we do successfully take Article Two and break it apart, if you're worried about free cash, there's eighty-five thousand dollars here that you could vote down. And then your net is a hundred fifty for those positions with the fire department. And then when you're bringing in an ambulance revenue, you're further offsetting it. Probably won't get to neutral, but it will help.
Linda, a very quick question. Do we have two hundred and thirty-five thousand or more in the free cash?
If we use the certified, less the amount that we are, are learning, it's um, might have to come out. That leaves us with six hundred, we have four hundred and sixty-one thousand after tonight's. Taking out two hundred fifty-five basically leaves us about two hundred thousand free cash. Remember, just to have this basic budget that's voted, used eight hundred thousand, over eight hundred thousand in free cash. We don't want to use free cash going into twenty-seven. But we'd like to uh know that we had the cushion to, to fall back on if we need to. Four hundred and sixty thousand going into FY twenty-seven is a lot better than two hundred thousand, but these are decisions that you get to make. I think that we're cutting it really, really close with two hundred thousand. And I think that puts us in a very difficult situation, not just for the, the fire department, but for many other departments in town, which we haven't, we're, we're not even at the point of knowing how many additional people. We're looking at additional layoffs for, for next year. And right now, we're not able to incorporate into the decision, this immediate decision, who, who else is going to have to be laid off for next year?
Thank you.
Lucille Windolowski, six Grand Oak Farm Road. My question is uh not in the big scope of all these salaries that you're discussing. I'd like to know, is our senior center in, considered in this council on aging section of your budget increase? Because there's rumors going around that the senior center will be closing at two o'clock in the afternoon or that there's the maintenance personnel would, they were, the gentleman would be using, losing his job. I just want, since all the finance committee and everybody's here, I just need a quick answer.
Randy.
That, that has never been discussed by any of us. It's just a rumor.
That's what I thought. And it is that uh budgeted under council on aging section where there's just one increase of eleven thousand dollars of a per- of salary. Am I correct? Is that where it fits in, in the budget?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I was, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is this still on?
Yes, it is.
Okay. My name is Erica Hollister, two twenty-five Middle Street. I just wanted to say that in all this talk about numbers, um, our house was saved from burning to the ground by the Hadley Fire Department in nineteen ninety-three. And uh, a member of my household was transported to the hospital in and out of consciousness. And stretching these services so thin that people can't do their jobs is something that should concern us all.
Jonah Bruegger, twenty-one Norwattic Drive. I had a free cash question. If we agree to the amendment as proposed and we agree to fund the firefighters out of free cash and we then find that our certified free cash dips below zero because of math and certification and all that, what actually happens to the town if we have a negative balance in our free cash?
Linda, is that something you can address or someone else? What happens if we run out of free cash?
So the free cash only changes, um, first of all, it's certified on July one. And so it doesn't fluctuate during the year. It, it, it might, but we, we keep that free cash level until we come to town meeting and spend it. So then it goes down and then we go to the next town meeting and we spend it. And then it's free, it's certified again the next year. So um, this is, we're not going to have negative free cash after this meeting. If we, and, and we would not spend more than the, let's say we have two hundred thousand left over. We wouldn't spend more than the money that we had left over at the spring town meeting. So um, what would happen to the town? I don't know, our account, but, but I, we're not going to get into that situation. If we have to have a budget that's more than, that would need two hundred thousand or more in free, more than two hundred thousand in free cash, then we would probably be looking at an override. But more likely, we'd be looking at uh losing several more positions in town and making sure we stayed within the revenues and within the free cash that we had available.
Shell, hang on for one sec. I, as, I've been moderator for a number of years on and off. It's awesome to see people that are regulars coming up to the microphone. I want to thank everybody who is going up to the microphone for the first time. This is what we're here for. Please continue to do that. Shell.
Shell Horowitz, sixteen Barstow Lane. I am really glad to see the creative thinking that's obviously been going on behind the scenes the last couple of weeks. I want to say thank you to all of you who put your heads together from all different points of view to try to dig ourselves out of this hole that we should have voted ourselves out of um a while back. I am planning with some concerns to vote yes. I don't like the idea of leaving so little free cash, but I think it's a better alternative than stripping the fire department below the effective level. And I speak both with the um perspective of somebody who lives in this community and want to see a strong community and also somebody who lives at the edge of town and is thinking, okay, my neighbor is a call firefighter. It's going to take fifteen minutes for them to get to the fire station, ten minutes to suit up. Another, with the sirens going, maybe it's only eight minutes back to my house. If there's a fire in my neighborhood, that's a whole lot of time for a fire to destroy a building. Um, and that's true in Hockenham where I live. It's true in other parts of town too, that are not near the firehouse. And it's also true for the, the, those people on the fire force who have to come in from all the fringes of town. to staff this. So I am, as I said, not without hesitation, but I'm definitely voting yes.
Hi, I'm Michael Boyle, seventy seven Hockenham Road. And I just wanted to say, I think there's, I realize we just literally just had an override attempt that failed. But I feel like I'm hearing a lot of concern about being penny wise and pound foolish and letting this the revenue from the CMS system and also just the general safety of the town degrade. And I'm wondering if there's any thought to doing a more limited, more targeted override specifically to make sure that we can get that revenue in and can stand up the fire department, which might have might have different chances in succeeding. I don't know. Obviously, like I said, we just tried, but I guess that's what I'm wondering.
Randy.
So yes, that that'll be something that we will be discussing in the future. Like Linda said previously, as soon as we get through this meeting, we'll immediately start working on next year's budget. And that will certainly be an option to discuss another override.
George Moriarty, twenty two Trimmer Road. I guess my question is, we're 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 attempting to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And a bunch of people had thrown out a hundred and fifty would keep the two firefighters. And then it was there was a hundred and eighty, and then it was two fifty six. So what is the number? And right now, the amendment is two fifty, two fifty, just say. How much free cash did we use this year just to get to where we are right now? Without this two hundred thousand or two hundred fifty thousand?
That was eight hundred thousand, wasn't that, Linda? Eight hundred and fifty thousand approximately, according to the town administrator. All of it. The administrator is saying.
I so we 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 needed, we used eight hundred thousand dollars from free cash to get to where we are right now. Okay, so I think what I, you know, heard people talk about is we we could, we could turn around and hire, I think the two fifty, if I'm not mistaken, would bring the two positions that aren't funded, plus keep the two positions. But at this rate, we're going to hire two people and then possibly lay them off in five months. I personally, I think it's probably wrong. We're having a hard time laying off two people. You know, is that number? Can that can that number change? And maybe we hold on with whatever two firefighters cost? And 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 try to get to the next year's budget. You know, maybe that's not smart. Maybe that's not what's, you know, physically responsible. Everybody has to understand their budget. And do you go in your house budget and outspend a lot of money and then hope that everything works out? So I just, I think it was, everybody's throwing numbers around and nobody, nobody has said exactly what two firefighters to keep those two firefighters working today. What that number is, and nobody said that number. It was a lot of around numbers. It could be one thirty, it could be more overtime needed, it could be all this stuff. But we're just throwing numbers out and 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 literally could end up having to lay off four people in nine months. So I guess everybody should think about it and actually come up with a real number before we make take this vote on the amendment.
Anybody want to comment to that?
I will say that the the numbers that have been thrown out are based on this gentleman's trying to manipulate the the numbers in the budget from Article one and Article two, trying to say that if we took this from that, then it would lower the two hundred and thirty whatever thousand dollars that is believed to be needed. So that's why you're hearing all the different numbers. But whatever the chief spankable said, the the amendments for two hundred and thirty four?
Two hundred and thirty five.
Two hundred and thirty five. So that's the number that we're working with right now.
John Kinsler, two oh six Bay Road. So it's two hundred thirty five thousand dollars to retain the two firefighters that would otherwise be laid off. The there's two other positions. One was the assistant chief who left and went to Granby. And there was a lieutenant who left us, went to a different department. Those two positions would remain unfilled. So it's two hundred thirty five thousand dollars out of free cash, which I agree. It does leave a smaller amount of money in there. I do have some reservations as well. However, there's also eighty five thousand dollars of free cash in Article two, which if we took Article two and voted on each line item individually, the town could decide do they want to allocate that eighty five thousand dollars? Let's say you you vote that money down. That effectively redirects it to the fire department. So your your net is one fifty. No? Well, there's free cash items in there, though. Yeah, there's a few. There's eighty five thousand of free cash in there.
Can I call the question?
Yeah, there is.
And as it stands right now, we have to vote Article two in its entirety as one block. But I will make a motion to remove that and we'll vote each line item. And then the town can decide how comfortable they are with spending two hundred thirty five thousand dollars on the fire department. So that's all it is.
Can I call the question?
Calling the question cuts the conversation off immediately, goes to a vote, it's a majority vote. If you'd like to hear more, vote no. If you are done and know how you're going to vote, vote yes. All in favor of calling the question, please raise your cards. Amendment, the amendment, yes. Oh, that's pretty damn near unanimous. For those opposed to calling the question on the amendment. One, two, three, four, five, six. All right, we're going to call that one seventy six to twenty. So the amendment is called. I'm going to read it one more time. Move to amend a motion as follows. Add two, add two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars to the fire department budget to fund existing fire positions through the end of the fiscal year. Money will be from free cash. All in favor, please raise your cards. This is a majority vote. Okay, you can put those down. Those opposed? Andy, and let me grab somebody on the other side. Chief, would you be willing to be a counter with me? And Andy, would you be willing to be a counter with me? Andy's always my go to guy. If if you guys would, Andy and chief, count together and then announce your total. Okay, you can put the cards down for right now. Okay, Andy, team up with the chief. We have someone who voted no and someone that voted yes. So we have balance. If you are in favor of the amendment, please raise your card and keep it up high so they can see it and count it. This is in favor to spend the two hundred and thirty five thousand on a free cash. It's going to be close. Put those cards up. Keep them up. Don't forget to count the head table up here, guys, and the registrars. Please make sure to count them. And if one of you could announce the total into the microphone and the other person confirm the count?
We're rarely at this level of discrepancy.
That's huge.
Do a count again? Okay. We have a discrepancy. Want this to be done right, folks. So apologize, but keep those cards up. We're voting yes. Yes. If this is to spend the two hundred and thirty five, there was discrepancy in the count. This is to spend the two hundred and thirty five. Please, please keep your cards up. You guys count the registrars in the head table, too? You can put your cards down now.
Mr. Moderator, I'll count eighty seven.
Eighty seven?
Same.
Eighty seven. Those opposed to spending the two hundred and thirty five thousand, please raise your cards.
Let's do some math.
Keep them up.
Need a total count.
You can put your cards down. This is being recorded, so I just want to be accurate. And whichever side prevails, this is why it's important to come to town meeting and to bring everybody that you know with you. No matter which side you're on.
One hundred and twenty seven.
Mr. Moderator, I concur.
The yeas are eighty seven, the nays are one twenty seven, the amendment fails. Back to Article one. Any final questions or comments on Article one?
I've never been up here before.
Thank you for coming out. Just much appreciated.
My name is Joanne Godding, and I live at eleven High Meadow Road. It looks like we're here because of the increase in health insurance. And I'm concerned, what are we going to do about that? What has been explored? Are there other plans? Are there other options? That's what I want to know.
Okay.
So the first thing that we have done, we've already taken the first step to look at other options. The first step was to adopt Chapter thirty two B within mass general laws. What that does is it allows us to move to different insurance carriers if the town so chooses. Step two will be coming at our very next select board meeting in early November, in which our HR director will discuss what the other the other options look like as far and and what the premiums may be. We will have to create a public union group essentially. So we'll be selecting individuals from each union that's in town to discuss what those options are, because the we will have to bargain with the unions to make those changes if we go to a different health insurance carrier. I have been working with our state representatives, our our state rep and our senator. They just recently passed a a bill through both houses to allow for us to for to allow for any towns who are members of the Hampshire County Trust, which is the trust that we're in right now, to borrow essentially against your liabilities that you have left within the trust. So that you don't have this massive cash flow problem that we have right now. So they did just pass that. And there are some meetings coming up very early next week with the Lieutenant Governor to discuss how that's going to work. So we are taking steps to look at all these other options. I am hesitant to say that we will do better on premiums. Just because everyone is having the same, you know, getting hit with the same premiums, as well as the fact that when you move from carrier to carrier, it's similar to if you were to change your car insurance, they're going to look at your history. And so moving to a different carrier will require them to look at our history and what's going on in in our town. And one of the arguments that the, I shouldn't say arguments, but one of the reasons that the Hampshire County Trust has given us for such a huge increase is is the high dollar claims that we're experiencing right now. And it's not just Hadley, it's a lot of other communities as well. And so again, I'm hesitant to say that we'll do better on premiums, but the security of moving to a different carrier will be there. That's that's really what we're hoping for. So yes, we are looking into it. And again, steps one and steps two are in process. And then after that, we will the select board, along with the unions, will make the decision as to where we're going to go.
Brandon Daniel, fifty seven Roosevelt Street, motion to move Article one to a vote.
All right, motion to close discussion. Is there a second? All those in favor of booting to a vote for Article one, raise your cards. Oh, goodness. All right. No, no further discussion needed there. I said that's unanimous. All those in favor of Article one, please raise your cards. All right, thank you. You can put those down. All those opposed to Article one, please raise your cards. One ninety three to three. Article one passes. Article two, motion, move the town appropriate one million four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for expenses associated with capital projects as delineated in Article two, the special town meeting warrant for October twenty third, twenty twenty five, and incorporated by reference herein, and to fund said appropriations to transfer eighty eight thousand dollars from free cash, eighty two thousand dollars from water reserves, five thousand dollars in Hadley Media reserves. And the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow up to one million two hundred and forty thousand dollars under and pursuant to Chapter forty four, Section seven and eight of the general laws and or any other enabling authority. Said amounts to be repaid from the general fund, water and sewer receipts as indicated, and to issue bonds and notes thereof. Is there a second? Finance Committee recommends five zero zero, Select Board recommends five zero zero, Capital Planning recommends four zero zero. And for this, we are going to turn to Mr. McCret, I'm sorry, Mr. McCretsky. Oh, you're already there. I'm sorry.
Already there. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name's Paul McCretsky. I live at two ninety eight River Drive. I'm also the eight day member of the Finance Committee, and I've been on the Capital Planning Committee for the past eighteen years. And as the moderator pointed out, the total of this article is one one four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. There are thirteen individual requests. And one of those thirteen are from the DPW. And then we have one request each from Hadley Media. and then we have one request each from Hadley Media, Police Department, the School Department, and the Select Board. And I don't want us to stay here all night, so I'm going to just spend a few seconds on each individual request and go over and write down the list in order as you see them. The first one is from the DPW. It's a building demolition request for seventy-five thousand dollars. And the reason that this has been requested, as you know, the town last year bought the property next to the current DPW and plans of expanding in the future sometime, and there's a a vacant house on the property, and the DPW is looking to have it demolished because there are issues of asbestos on it, and also poses other safety and liability issues. The next item is a Chapter ninety supplemental. As many of you know already, each year the town gets Chapter ninety money for use of the highways, and most of that's spent on the roads themselves. However, they are looking for an additional one hundred thousand dollars for other incidentals, as I call them, relating to items such as line striping. The third item is a fifty thousand dollar request for the Harts Brook Bridge replacement, and this is an engineering request. And in speaking with the DPW superintendent, he was saying when they submit a request to get this approved from the state and to get some state money for this project, it's always good to have a plan in place and not just apply without anything if you really enhance your chances of getting state funds to supplement this project. So he does want to have this engineering and design in place in advance when they apply for the actual grant. The next item is a sewer asset management program. The request is for three hundred thousand dollars. And in speaking again with the DPW superintendent, he said there's actually a three million dollar backlog that he has in maintenance, but some of the things that this would be used for in this three hundred thousand dollars is for pumps, pump maintenance, and things such as pipeline inspections. The next item is water asset management, again, three hundred thousand dollars. And the primary example that the DPW superintendent pointed out to us is on Millsite Road. There's currently no water protection there, so they're looking to enhance that on that street. Over and on, we have the garage door replacement. This one's only for eight thousand dollars. And the superintendent, actually, when we were meeting at Capital Planning, he had a twenty thousand dollar request for another item, and he was willing to forego that request because this was a higher priority for him because there was a safety issue involved, and they had an incident, and he just wants to get this taken care of, so he was willing to delay the twenty thousand dollar request to a future time. The next item is Highway MS four, and that is for stormwater management. This is required, and it's primarily for the street sweeping and catch base and cleanouts. This is fifty fifty-five thousand dollars, sixty-five thousand. DPW is the next water management grant match. The request is for thirty-two thousand dollars, and this one is really meant to get a grant that is equal to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, and it's to reactivate, primarily to reactivate the Mount Warner Wells for water quality enhancement. And the next item is SCADA. I'm sure you're all wondering what SCADA stands for. It's a supervisory control and data acquisition system. It's primarily software that is used in the water treatment plant to monitor and for cybersecurity, too. And in regards to this particular one, it's a fifty thousand dollar request, but they have also applied for a grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars, and that would offset this fifty thousand dollar request. Hadley Media is asking for computer and camera equipment, and they basically just want to continue to provide quality local access program for us. The police are asking for a ballistic fist replacements. The amount is thirty thousand dollars. There's also a grant that is available for this. They would spend the full thirty thousand dollars. The monies would come in from the grant when received, and it would go into free cash, and and believe it or not, it must have a useful life. It's usually around five years. And I remember in the number of years I've been on Capital Planning, I've seen this come up every so often, so this is very important. And actually, I want to stop here before I go through the other two because there's been some talk about taking any of these three articles in this that are funded with free cash and possibly taking that away to supplement the other side of the budget. And I personally do not think, you know, that's the way to go. It's not a good idea. So I, you know, please consider that in your voting tonight. Finally, the schools, they're looking for security updates for the safety of our children. And basically, this involves like, I guess, for lack of a better term, a man trap, meaning the double doors. Currently, if you go into Hopkins, you're inside with one set of doors. This way, you'd go into the first set, you have a second set, and if there's ever any incident, the other issue or other feature is that there's, you have blue light flashes, so parents and school buses know not to go into the school, not to drop their children off. And the final item is shades. In the event that there is a lockdown, they pull the shades. And lastly, is a request from the Select Board for a on-call architect and engineer. Again, the amount is fifty thousand dollars, but this would be on, again, as it says, an on-call basis, so if they only use ten thousand dollars, they could roll into a future year, and it may be a year, two, or three before they're back again to ask for more. And as far as the financing is concerned, I was talking to Linda, our treasurer, we're going to share that part of it. So Linda, if you want to step up to the mic and go into the details on that.
Sure. Hello? Okay. We have over the next few slides showing how the, how these are financed. It is, it is a single article over about one point four million dollars, but the funding comes from, out of several pockets and several different methods for funding. So the first slide shows the amounts that are coming out of free cash and our water reserves. These, this is, these are pockets of money now that we have that have been certified and can be spent directly out of that. You would not want to borrow eight thousand dollars or five thousand dollars. These are not, these are things that are better spent out of free cash. We always select the ones that are on the lower scale. We don't put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be paid out of free cash, so we make these decisions as the best way to finance the projects that are before you. And so those are all grouped together. You see water reserves, sewer, Hadley Media reserves, and then the free cash. And the next slide shows all of the borrowing, which is basically everything else that isn't out of one of the cash pockets is borrowing. The difference between the borrowing items is where the money, where the funds are paid back from. The first one, two, three, four, five, first five are paid out of the general fund budget. This is a budget, this is a line item in the budget that you've already passed. We're going to, we spend, and you'll see we're not moving to the next slide yet, but you'll see in the next slide how that works. And then the two sewer asset management projects for three hundred thousand each. The one that's water will be paid out of the water debt and interest budget, which again has already been passed. And the sewer will be paid out of sewer, same basis. So our third and final slide then shows what these annual budgets are that I'm talking about. We have an amount that's paid out of, there's borrowing, borrowing with when we pay it out of the general fund in this way, it means that we have borrowed as subject to the levy. You've seen borrowing, and you go by, you vote for these large items like two million dollars for a fire truck. And you, then you vote on a, on a debt exclusion override at the ballot, and that passes there, and then that amount is added to your tax rate, and that's how that debt is paid off. However, the second kind of borrowing is where we borrow to be paid out of the levy. That means whatever we're borrowing is coming out of the general fund budgets. It's already incorporated in there. It does not add to your taxes. So we pay off about five hundred thousand dollars a year at a general fund budget. That, that total budget, I think it's oh, I think the general fund alone is over a million. Including the debt exclusions, a million, but I think five hundred thousand of it is dedicated to paying off the levy borrowing. So then we have a, we have similar line items in the water department and the sewer department. To be honest, that, those are the FY twenty-six budget items, but we're looking ahead to, I know water and sewer rates are going to be raised this year, and one of the reasons is to cover a lot of the additional capital items that need to be that need to be spent in order to maintain our infrastructure. There's, there's a lot to be done. So that covers it.
Dan Dukavitz, one thirty, Hacklum Road. Mr. Moderator, is it up to your discretion to vote on these things individually, or do they have to be voted in a block?
I need a motion from the floor to the technical term is divide, but I would need to know which item you wanted to divide second, and it would go to a majority vote, then we would be able to pull it out.
So we'd have to go like just the ones we wanted pulled out, correct?
Correct. For example, you would say, I make a motion to divide water asset management. I'm making that up right now. Somebody have to second it, the town would vote a majority, then we would pull that out and vote on that right away, then we would come back to the article at hand. Make sense? Okay.
I like to make a motion to, I like to make a motion to pull out one for a building demolition and two for the highway Chapter ninety supplemental. Wonder if anybody like to second that?
Is there a second? I heard some mumbled. I thought there, I assume it's a second. All right, so we are looking at the Capital DPW Department, Capital Project Building Demolition, amount seventy-five thousand, funding source borrow, and DPW Department, Highway Chapter ninety supplemental, one hundred thousand dollars borrow. We're looking to divide that out and vote on each one individually. All those in favor, please raise your cards. It's a simple majority.
I'll go sit down.
Okay, those opposed? I'm going to make a call and say that it is one hundred to, let's go ninety-six. It's going to be close. I can do a count if somebody requests. But it's pretty obvious that the NOS would have that. Any other questions or comments concerning? If somebody would like to have a count, they can approach the microphone and ask for a count. We can do that. I did a visual call.
Jamie Cole, two thirty-six Middle Street. I have a couple of questions. A demolition. So you purchased the property, which was just over an acre. Oh. So the question is, is that you purchased the property, which was just a little over an acre for over three hundred. Now you want to take down the building, which was used or intentions for use, to use for the office space for the DPW. Now you want to tear it down. What are you going to use for the office space in the meantime? Like, what, are you going to request more money from the town to build, put in a new building from us?
Scott, would you care to address that? Yes, sir. That's passed. The question was, are we still doing a count or had that passed? And the count had passed. The count, the count is behind us, but the count failed. Failed to divide the two building demolition and Chapter ninety supplemental. It failed to divide that out to vote on those individually.
My question is just, why should we do a demolition on a building when they can possibly use it for what they intended it for?
Mr. Moderator.
Is it point of, are you going to? This is, I will answer the question.
Okay, all right, Jim, please, thank you. Jim Maximowski, twelve No Water Drive, Chairman of the DPW Building Committee. The intention of by purchasing this house was to expand the potential area on the property of which the proposed, once we vote on it, possible DPW, new DPW facility could be utilized. When we purchased the house, we knew when we purchased it that it wasn't in the greatest of condition, and we were hoping to be able to reuse it. We have since with the architect and engineering that we have used with the DPW Committee found out that the house would not is, it is usable as a office. There's no question about it, but the cost to reuse it as an office building would be more expensive than to tear it down and build a new one. It's simply in tough shape. There's asbestos in it. The reason, one of the reasons, probably the major reason, like to tear it down now. It's a liability to the town, as Mr. McCretzky has mentioned. And if something were to happen to that property, there is some asbestos in it. If something were to happen to the property, fire, you know, who knows, whatever, and it was to become a, let's say, almost a pile of rubble. Right now, there was asbestos that could be removed at a reasonable cost. Reasonable means still pricey. However, if the building was to become, say, a fire, now the entire building is hazardous waste, and the cost to remove it would be way more than the seventy-five thousand you see in front of you.
But, so you purchased the property for a certain amount of money. Now you're demolishing it, and then you're going to rebuild for the office space with another building? So my question is, is that you're going to invest all this money into this one project when we don't need to demo it and save that money for something else?
The house needs to come down, even if the new facility will be built. It is not usable for anything. It cannot be used as a house. The, I don't think the building inspector is here, but the building building inspector has not condemned it, but he said it should be condemned.
Understandable. I know the history of the house. It's but it's just the money could have been used for something else, and we just jumped ahead and purchased something with what we shouldn't have.
Thank you. Rick White, forty-two River Drive. It seems to me that the whole question was about dividing the 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 sections of the motion. So don't realize how we got away from that.
Okay. So what happens, a motion is made?
I did see, I did see a vote of, that went by for twelve seconds, and it was one hundred to ninety-six.
That, that was a judgment call on my part here, appeared to be a very sea of green over on this side of the room. We could do a count, though.
I would love to do that. That's what I really want.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So, so we can do that. I'm within my right to do that, correct? Okay. All right, so we're going to go back a little bit here, and we're looking at pulling out the building, DPW Building Demolition, seventy-five thousand dollars, funding source borrow. DPW Department, Highway Chapter ninety supplemental, one hundred thousand dollars, and borrow. And if I could bother there's, hey, you're all set to go. Excellent. All right, if you are in favor of pulling these two items out to vote on them as standalone, so we would do one vote on building demolition, however that turns out, then do a vote on the Highway Chapter ninety supplemental, however that comes out, and then we come back to Article Two. So if you're in favor of that, And then we come back to article two. So if you're in favor of that, please raise your green card. Put them up high. You guys voting? Register us in the front table and get counted.
90.
This moderator, I can go.
Okay, you could put those down. Those opposed, please raise your green cards. Trying to save time. Had to work out. See how close I was. Okay, you can put your cards down.
Mr. Moderator.
Same.
All right. So the motion to divide and pull those out. It is a count taken, uh, to count vote previous account to verify the previously taken count. Yes. Uh, the yeses are 90, the noes are 108. The motion to pull them out and divide does not pass. It fails.
Okay. I can still speak to a motion, correct?
Absolutely.
All right. On, on the building demolition, I'd like just two questions. Number one, is this a professional estimate on the demolition? You know, I mean, did they call associated records and get a real estimate or are they guessing? And number two, why do you want to do this when the project hasn't been okayed yet anyway? We don't know if we're going to build a DPW or not. Thank you.
Hey, Dan, um, I need a handwritten, the, the uniforms are in the back, uh, just divide. Yeah, yeah.
Mr. McCarthy, better for the professional estimate.
Yes, there was a professional estimate done on that project.
Okay. And Scott, just state your name and who you are.
Scott McCarthy, Director of Public Works.
Okay. Yes.
So the second part of that question was, why do we want to tear this building down now? When there's no plans for a new DPW building at this time? And the big issue, as Mr. Maximowski explained earlier, is liability. If somebody gets in that building and gets hurt or killed for that matter, it's going to cost us way more than $75,000 to, to fix that. So we, this, this is money well spent.
Chief, wasn't there like a squatter or something that had to be yanked out of there? There was. Okay. I thought, I'd heard that somewhere. Right.
That's a good point, that there were squatters in this building. And the town worked very diligent, diligently to have them moved out in a very humane manner. And they have. It is now empty and boarded up.
Hi, uh, Brandon Daniel again, 57 Roosevelt Street. When Mr. McCreskey from the finance committee initially brought up article two, he said one crucial word on the seventh item, that it was required. If you look at the first six items, these are not required. These are borrowed expenses. Okay? I mean, you need to tell me at the end of the year, there's not $8,000 in the DPW budget to appropriate for fixing your garage door, replacing a garage door. It just seems really ridiculous to me. You know, I thought this town had a spending problem, but apparently if you look at the first six items, this is now a borrowing problem. Um, I think it's time to wake up and realize that. The first six items alone are $833,000 of this article. Um, and I just think that's, that's a little ridiculous. So.
Paul, just, just to clarify, which one, which one is required? I don't believe the garage doors. There was another one.
I believe when I was saying referring to a required article, I was referring to the MS four and not to the garage doors.
Okay. All right. George, you coming up? Okay. Yep.
George Moyarty, 22 Truman Road. I understand that all this borrowing doesn't change, uh, what, what is budgeted, but what is the cost of all this to the tax rate? So if we voted no right now on all of them, it's 1.4 million dollars. How much of that would be able to be used next year to maybe save three or four positions? Cause that's all we, we've really heard that we're, we're laying people off this year and not filling positions. Next year's could be worse is what I think I've heard. But I, I think you had mentioned that that money is already put in for borrowing. How much, if this wasn't used, how much would that save for next year's budget to do what we have to do with it?
For next year's budget? Absolutely nothing because we have other borrowing, others, we're still paying off other borrowing. If, if the town decided not to borrow anymore within the levy, uh, the soonest you would see that drop down would be about, um, three years. So we're spending 500,000 a year. It's an even amount because some years it's 400, some years it's 700. So we keep that amount that we're spending at 500,000. So right now there's a, there's a backlog of what we have to, uh, what we have borrowed and not paid off yet. So we would continue to spend that in the budget over the next three years. So like I said, if you had a complete freeze on borrowing, then in three years, probably about three years from now, it is the only time you'd see a difference.
I guess my, maybe my question wasn't put out clearly. If we don't spend, if we, if we don't borrow the 1.4 million dollars, I understand you put 500,000 dollars a year to cover all our borrowing. So what, if we were to went out tomorrow and borrowed 1.4 million dollars, what would that? How much is that going to cost per, per year? I, I understand you're putting it. So if we don't borrow 1.4 million dollars, do we only need to put 300,000 in the line item to, to cover borrowing? I guess I'm trying to try to put a number to it.
No, because we'd want to, uh, we would accelerate other payments. We would have other payments that we would make in that time. Because if we drop that down to 300,000, we're just increasing the interest that we're paying on the amount that's outstanding.
So I was going to say too, that these are capital articles versus, um, operational. And so those are two very different buckets financially. So anything that changes here won't affect anything to do with, um, people, positions, jobs, because that's a whole separate, um, lime, line item in the budget.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of article two, this is a two thirds vote, by the way. All those in favor of article two, please raise your green cards. Thank you. You can put those down. All those opposed? Well, we got to count again. It's a two thirds. Okay. If you are in favor of article two, please raise your green cards to be counted. You can put your cards down.
This moderator, I count 170.
I concur.
All those opposed to article two, please raise your green card. You can put your cards down.
This moderator, I have 81.
I concur.
81. So eight, nine.
Okay. The two thirds majority is not reached. Article two does not pass. Back to the drawing board is what it means? It's okay. Article three, move the town except vast general law, chapter 138, section 12D as in delta. Is there a second? Excellent. Article number three, David Phil, you're up.
So this is a happier article. This is an article that will give you more options for adult beverages at your favorite restaurant.
How about Heine Hopkins?
So this does not change the quotas for the number of liquor licenses in town, but it allows a establishment to trade in their beer and wine only license for all alcohol, which means hard alcohol, that kind of stuff, as well as beer and wine. So it could possibly increase revenue coming into the town. It doesn't change the quota for the number of licenses that we issue.
Select board recommends 500. Finance committee recommends 400. Any questions or comments?
So I'm Shell Harrow at 16 Barstool Lane, and I'm a little curious about, um, that the current licenses are transferable and the new ones will not be. So what happens if a restaurant goes out of business or the, they obviously they're going to pay something for the liquor license, but they're not going to be buying it on the open market. So if people could just explore the, the ramifications of that a little bit, I think it would help us make the decision.
Jennifer.
My name is Jennifer Sanders James. I'm the Assistant Procurement Officer and Licensing Coordinator for the Town of Hadley. The licenses, when they're non-transferable, you can still transfer your license as a wine and malt license. The alcohol, all alcohol portion is the portion that goes away. The all alcohol is non-transferable. Your wine and malt license is what you revert to if you want to sell it. And I will say that you can't sell a license in Hadley right now anyway, because we have some available.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You can put those down. All those opposed? All right. We got 198 to one. Article three passes. Article four, move the town, amend the town's general bylaws by adding a new chapter, 86 dash five has set forth an article four of the warrant. Is there a second? Here's a second. Okay. Article four, Molly Keegan.
Okay. Thanks, Kirk. Um, so this article was something that was actually passed previously at the annual town meeting. Um, I believe that there was a minor modification. Uh, there was some, I think the payment term needed to be more explicit than the original wording that we had. So town council recommended that we bring it back, uh, again for a vote.
And this pertains to, you build it out just a little bit.
Yep.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Matthew Prevent from town council. So the specific change was that in the package of revisions following a Supreme Court decision that related to tax foreclosures conducted by the town for failure to pay real property taxes, it empowered towns to also enter into payment agreements whereby a delinquent taxpayer could have a period of time to repay that. The language used by the legislature and the law indicated that certain, the lengths of it and the interest that would be charged would be up to certain amounts. And so that was the language that was originally employed. After the passage, in reviewing the bill, the, uh, the bylaw, the attorney general made the determination that the law actually required a municipality to choose a specific number in that range. This was an issue that's happened to many cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And so pretty much all of the communities that had this issue are putting the issue back before their voters to clean up the language and make sure that the, uh, possibility of having the agreements is set forth in the town's bylaws in a form acceptable to the attorney general.
Any questions or comments? Everybody get that? All right. We will move to a vote. All in favor of article four, please raise your card. Thank you. You can put those down. Those opposed? Jess, that'll be unanimous. Article five, move the town appropriate $38,955 from the sewer impact fund for the purpose of a grant match for the rural development fund, grantee infrastructure program. Select board recommends 500. Finance committee recommends three to two to zero. Is there a second? All right. So we have article five, and that is Mr. Iser.
All right. So the purpose of this article is to, uh, spend 3, $38,955 to, uh, for the town's portion of. for the town's portion of a grant that I believe is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that right, Scott? Somewhere in that ballpark? Three, okay, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Now, I know there's, and this is going to be for extending our existing sewer line down Route nine to possibly, well, it would be to tie into the Amherst Sewer Line. And I know there's lots of debate about whether that makes sense financially, et cetera, et cetera. But the main purpose is to allow for increased development on Route nine. One of the things that we've been talking about in our budget issues is how to come up with more revenue. And we're trying to figure out how to make Route nine more accessible to more businesses, housing, whatever it might be. And we don't have any projects in the pipeline right now, but my opinion is that we would need this to have it ready in case somebody came tomorrow or next week or whatever and wanted to put something in on Route nine. And we'd have to say, sorry, we don't have the infrastructure for it unless we do this, and then we would have it ready to go. And if, even if we don't build it right now, these are the kind of plans that will probably be a forever kind of thing. The pipe design would not, would not change. The only thing that would change over time would be the cost to install it.
Ray Michkowski, fifty-four Cummins Road. Listen, folks, this one is, this one's a closer to the mic. Okay, this one's going to open up a can of worms in my eyes. We've got a thirty-eight thousand dollar request here. It's, and it's gonna supposedly open up a three hundred and ninety thousand dollar grant that we're gonna get. We're good. The plan is to basically pump the sewage, everything from Lowe's to the Amherst line to the Town of Amherst. I don't know if we want to lose control of that section of town. I know, I know we get water. I know we saw a lot of water there. I know we have a lot of sewage revenue there as well. This, this thirty-eight thousand dollars originally came to the CPA for, for funding on, on low income, or not low income, affordable housing. And in, in the, in the request, the proposed, it was for a proposed chapter forty B development, including fifty affordable housing units and the redevelopment of the Hampshire Mall under a proposed forty R smart growth overlay projected up to three hundred and fifty residential units with twenty-five percent, approximately eighty-eight units would be affordable housing. So this is something now we got to take a look at. Are we really willing to look at those stresses that that's going to be put on our, on our fire, our police, our, you know, our, our schools? This is something that we've really got to consider voting no on. I just, I think when a, when a development does come down the line, we should put the onus on the, on the developers. They need, they need to pay if they want to come to this town. If we're very, very open to, to development, but not at the expense of our way of life here. I just, I feel like, you know, listen, this is just, we're just going to be rolling out the red carpet here, but we're not only rolling out the red carpet here, we're buying the red carpet. All right? So I don't, I'm voting no on this. I urge you to do the same.
Kirk, could I just clarify a few things? Thank you. So just for background, this conversation with the Town of Amherst started, I think, eight or nine years ago. As you know, things happen very slowly, sometimes in municipal government. And the conversation started around, could we be more cooperative? And think a little bit more regionally, especially around sewer and water. That conversation started with me on my previous tenure on the Select Board. David Phil picked it up when I rolled off of the Select Board, and then here we are, still talking about it. I want to just be really clear, there is no specific project. One of the criticisms that I've heard over time is that people wish we did more long-range planning and not be so reactive. So listening to that and taking that to heart, this is something that we're trying to do for a long-range plan. Again, there's no specific project. It's going to give us options on multiple fronts. So yes, part of the justification for doing this is to remove one of the obstacles that we currently have in front of us to do any additional or any meaningful additional development on Route nine, because the first question people ask is what about the sewer? And what we know is that if we need to add on to or modify our existing sewer plant, we're talking millions and millions of dollars. So in order to kind of stave that off, we're trying to see if we can cooperate with a neighbor, put a plan in place that would allow us to send some sewage from that pump station to Amherst, potentially at a reduced cost, we don't know. The only thing that you're voting on tonight is to allow us to move forward for the feasibility study to make sure we know what we're talking about so that if indeed it is feasible, if and when the time comes, as Bill Dwyer said, you know, we're years away from any project, you know, reasonably coming to fruition that would tap into this, then we have our ducks in a row. And I also want to remind everybody that any zoning changes have to come to this body. Town meeting needs to approve anything. So this isn't an end run around. It's not some sneaky plan to bring affordable housing to town. We're just trying to get good information in front of the voters and make sure that when we make decisions going forward, we make them with facts at hand and not just hearsay and innuendo.
Shell Harrow at sixteen Barstow Lane, before I make my comment, I just want to ask a clarifying question. Isn't this area already sewed?
It is.
David, please.
So the area already is on sewer. But when this conversation started, one of the things that we were concerned about was reaching the capacity of our wastewater treatment plant on Middle Street. And we were looking at, you know, you could be having to spend ten, twenty million dollars to upgrade the plant or replace the plant. So we were looking at, you know, how do you bring additional tax revenue in with growth? Do we want growth in Hockenham and North Hadley? Probably not, but Route nine is a possibility. So we looked at how can we send some of that sewage to Amherst that has a plant that's at a lower utilization, you could say, of their treatment capacity? Let them treat that sewage waste. And so we can extend the life of our wastewater treatment plant and still continue to grow tax revenue in town. At the time we were talking about it, their sewer rates were significantly lower than ours were. So the idea was we could still send the wastewater over there, have it treated, continue to generate revenue here for Hadley, but not have to take on the expense of upgrading our plant at the end of the middle street.
Okay, Bill, were you going to add to that before I make my comment or wait? Not?
Not specifically to that. I had a few other things to say.
Okay, so I was on the Long Range Planning Implementation Committee for nine years. Planning Board Member Maximowski was one of the other people who did that. And there, we discussed a lot of things that were in the plan that was adopted sometime, I don't know, two thousand, two thousand and one, somewhere around there, we put in that plan by a very large percentage of vote here at town meeting, by the way. And the interesting thing is I have been involved in how the town affairs in one way or another since moving here twenty-seven years ago. And the thing that I keep hearing over and over again from people who grew up here is my kids can't afford to buy in town, or the people who work for me can't afford to buy in town. So actually, I think on the question that the previous speaker to me at this microphone raised, I think that would be an argument in favor of moving forward, but also the cost savings that have been outlined. Sewage plants are damned expensive, keeping them running. I lived around the corner from the one in North Hampton for a long time, and there were constant maintenance issues there. So I'm going to support this.
Bill. Hi, Bill Dwyer, three eighty-eight River Drive and Planning Board. I just wanted to say two things. One is, this is not building anything. This is merely an engineering study. And it has no preset conclusion. It could tell us that it's not, it's a bad idea. So that would be something good to know. But specifically, as a prior speaker said, if a project should come forward at some time in the future, if and after town meeting approves zoning changes that would allow housing developments of that size, then we have a design that we could present to the developer and say, by the way, go to it. If you want to put all those houses there and you want them to be serviced by sewer, you're going to connect us to the Amherst Sewer Treatment, Regional Sewer Treatment Plant. So I see it's a win-win. It's not a huge, it's a ten percent match. We will learn valuable information from it. And as Molly said, we'll have the, the table set for company. But they're going to have to bring the food. They're going to have to do the connection.
Dan DeKevitz, one thirty Hockenham Road. I don't agree with a lot of what I hear. I kind of like Hadley the way it looks now. I can't picture four hundred or some odd houses. I don't care if they're high income. I don't care if they're over fifty-five, whatever. I like Hadley the way it looks now. And four hundred houses, or maybe five hundred, would change the whole character of this town. And I don't think we're quite ready for that. And I kind of like the way it is now. So I'm voting against this. Thank you.
So one thing that Scott, one thing that Scott did say during our meeting last week was that a lot of the sewage from Route nine are, is things that are more costly for us to treat ourselves, whether it's the, you know, from the car washes and the grease traps and things like that. So I did just want to throw that out there as well, that the sewage from Route nine and the businesses is very different than in the residential area. So this could end up saving us money. The other thing too, and the person that asked me, I don't think is here tonight, thinking that this would be lost revenue. From my understanding, we're still sending the bills out to, even if this did happen, we are still sending the bills out to the restaurants and businesses on Route nine. Us pushing this off to Amherst would be us paying Amherst, and that has nothing to do with the bills that go out to the folks here in town. So essentially, this could be additionally cost savings if they're able to do it cheaper than we are here.
Dylan Barstow, man's one forty-six Hockenham Road. Addressing the previous speaker, I don't like what Hadley is right now. We're in a situation where we are not passing an override. We're cutting services and we're having a ton of strain. I love the people here. I love how it looks. But we are not taking care of our services and our town. If we're, if we're hearing that we want low taxes, which is what was said with the override vote, that's great. I'm also hearing tonight with fire that we want stable services. The only solution out of all this is growth. You can't have stable services and not have high taxes. And if we're going to do, if we're going to do smart growth, we need to consider where it's going. Route nine is a great place to put it, where we already have infrastructure. Yeah, that's all I have to say.
George Moyerty, twenty-two Trimmer Road. I guess my question is, when this, you know, how this started about pumping the sewer, someone said nine years ago, but we've had, there's been conversations in town. Maybe there's not anything in front of the planning board today. But does, does Hadley need three hundred apartments at Hampshire Mall or Mountain Farmers Mall? I think if we hand these, these developers a plan, say here, it's going to cost you whatever amount of money, it's easy for them. But I think if, if we have abilities to slow projects that we don't want, and this would be one of them, I think, that if we don't have all the plans saying, hey, this is going to cost this much money and Amherst is okay with it. And we end up with three hundred and fifty, or whatever the number is. I mean, the town of Hadley years ago, when there was going to be two hundred houses on North Maple, you know, kind of how they fought like hell that that wouldn't happen. And it didn't. But here we are wanting to spend thirty-eight thousand dollars to get the ball rolling so that these developers can come in and just say, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll pay the, the money. And then we have no say. I understand it has to go through town meeting and, and change bylaws, but why are we spending money ahead of time? Is our sewer plant that bad? Because you're saying this is only going to get shelved. There's nothing to get developed. And it's going to sit five years without a million changes and the whole thing being redesigned or re, rethought of. So spending money now for something that could happen in five or 10 years, to me, is probably a waste of money. And it gives the town meeting and the, and the townspeople another chance of holding projects up that they do not want. I, you know, I don't think a restaurant going to go in is going to make a difference on the sewer. Route nine is pretty full through there. There's always room for some more, but you throw three hundred and fifty house units somewhere. You know, we talked about fire, police, everything is now going to be a problem. So I would suggest vote no until, you know, maybe a contractor comes in and wants to spend all the money to have it engineered and, and gone through, but why are we doing it now?
Mark Dunn, twenty Hadley Place. I'm also on the planning board. I'm also on a few other organizations. I just want to clarify that I think, I feel like a lot of people are tying this to the smart growth and the talk about adding affordable housing. And I personally am chairing that committee to do, to come up with a smart growth zoning overlaid district that I, that we would hopefully bring to the town. And I'm not feeling very optimistic it's going to pass. And that's okay. When that comes up, you vote it down and that's your choice. And that may happen. But stopping this is not going to stop that. Or, you know, voting no on this, I mean, that's not going to stop all the other developments that are happening. And, you know, you see builders building lots around, and those houses keep coming. And we're getting to our limit is what I heard from Scott. So you can vote that down next year and say, we don't want this affordable housing, but we're still going to have growth. And that Amherst plant was built, designed for us as a regional. And here's an opportunity to get ten cents on the dollar to get the state to fund engineering that will help us in the future when we're going to need this. And if you vote this down, then you can tell your kids in ten to twenty years when we have to tie in, no, I, now you have to pay the whole foot. I didn't want to pay ten cents on the dollar to have this engineered. Those are my thoughts.
Rick White, forty-two River Drive. Just want to say, comparing ourselves to other towns, Chicopee right now has a residential tax rate of seventeen percent. Their commercial tax rate is thirty-five percent. Right now in our town, we're at eleven to twelve percent for residential as well as commercial. So why aren't we increasing Route nine to pay for these increases and pay for the fire that they cause? I, all I got to say is nobody's been called two hundred times to my house for shoplifting. Yeah, thank you.
Michelle Morris Friedman, forty-five Roosevelt Street. The two speakers ago, the person said every point I was going to make, but I do want to bring us back to the point that this is not a vote about housing. This is a vote about putting money toward a study that could save us a lot of money down the road, not only in terms of Amherst sewage, but not overtaxing our system and having to build brand new infrastructure, which as we all know from previous town meetings, is becoming more and more expensive. So I wish we could just focus on the issue at hand. And if people have concerns about the town, And if people have concerns about the town, um, getting too big or having too much development, let's work as a town to have forums for help, to have people voice their concerns there. But right now this is the issue at hand.
Sasha Kopp, 77 Hockenham Road. I just wanted to address something that one of the previous speakers said in asking if our sewer system is really so bad that we need to take this action. And I just want to point out, it might be very soon if we refuse to fund basic maintenance of town systems.
Alan Weinberg, 108 Bay Road. I'm, I'm going to vote in favor of this. I hear people saying they're afraid of what might happen, what might happen, what slippery slope we might be on and changing the town. That's not what this is about. In my view, this is about the best way forward to keep our treatment plant operating properly and giving us an option in the future for dealing with the stuff that comes down Route nine to Middle Street, which is difficult for us to handle. And we're, you know, there's a possibility of getting close to capacity. We have a sludge problem, disposal problem that's costing us plenty of money to deal with. If we ever are able to go to Amherst, which this study will at least give us the opportunity to think about, that would be so much better for the town. It would take the pressure off the treatment plant. It would protect the Connecticut River, which we're responsible for. And I think in the long term, it would save us money.
Peter, what capacity are you speaking in?
Resident.
Resident, okay.
19 Middle Street in Hadley. I was one of the two that said no on this article. I talked to Scott about this. Our sewer plant is at 65%. I don't know what we, the planning board and the zoning board have not yet made a decision as to what's happening with Route nine. So we are, as a couple of the previous head speakers had said, is that we are doing something that we have no control over or what's being done in the future. If there were future plans ahead of us, then that was something that we could prep for. But right now we are actually, like one said, we're actually giving them the red carpet. And I know it would go to a town vote, but when the planning board or zoning board and if things turn to 40R, there's going to be unlimited things that we are not going to be able to do. It's going to be voted in and we won't have any control for the 300, the 400 units. Then we're talking about if there's 400 units and if 25% of that are students, now look what you're doing with the school system, the infrastructure for the fire, the sewer and the ambulance and the fire department, just everything. That's right there. Could change the entire format of this town of Hadley. We're not even zoned for apartments. We're not zoned for any of that. It hasn't even gone through any of the zoning, but yet things are already in plan and in motion for it. I'm voting no.
Paul Benjamin, 35 Newton Lane.
Paul, finance committee, you're yourself, I guess.
A little bit of both.
Okay.
Uh, I was one of the people voted for this. I'm so in favor of this that I think it might pay us if we do get the study and the study says it, it's a affordable thing for us to do and Amherst is willing to take us in. This would be something we should do right away, regardless of what's coming or not coming. Because this will take the pressure off our current plant. We are under extreme pressure with increased prices for hauling sludge and our plant does not de-water. I don't want to get into the weeds, as it were, but sludge, three, two things come out of treatment plants. Effluent, which is hopefully clean enough for the rivers and sludge, but sludge has two types, wet tons and dry tons. We ship wet tons. We don't have de-watering. We're paying more and more per ton to ship that out because a lot of it is water. It will cost us a fortune to modify that plant. We probably have to bring other things up to speed and bring in polymers and other things needed to de-water to get the price of the hauling down. That price is going to keep going up because landfills are getting more and more expensive. Amherst de-waters, they're a regional plant. We will be able to shift that cost over there at an affordable rate. Think of it like the electric company. You get your electric bill and there's two parts. There's a delivery fee from Eversource and then whoever you're buying your power from, Eversource or some other forum. That's essentially what we'd be able to do. We wouldn't send them two bills. We'd have one bill, but we would be subcontracting out. You know, all we're hearing in here is don't hire our own people. Let's subcontract. This does that. It means we don't have to hire more people at our current plant. We don't have to expand it. It lowers our operational costs. This is a great thing for this town. There are very few rural plants in our position that have the option to tie in affordably, affordably to a regional plant. Usually they're so far away, it's tens of millions of dollars. This is probably on the order, I'll, I'll take a bet that it's under $5 million worth of pipe to tie into them. That sounds like a lot of money, but when you finance it over 30 years, it's very little money. Okay. But the point is that that can be paid by the hookup charges from people and the savings that we would have in lower disposal cost. Those costs are going to keep going up. I guarantee you, if you don't do this study in a few years, maybe next year, you'll be here listening to the increase in our budget from increases again. Just like with the health service, we don't get any, with the healthcare, we don't get any choice in what it's costing us to send away this sludge. So, you know, you want us to start changing behaviors. You want us to start changing the way we think of things. But you just voted down capital improvements to fix some of the, uh, the deficiencies in our sewer and water to buy ballistic vests for our police department. That's what your town, you're, that, that's our town now? 10 cents on the dollar. I don't understand this. So yes, I'm going to vote yes. I encourage you all to do that.
Dylan? Dylan Barstow Mans, 146 Hockenham Road. Um, I just want to emphasize a point that a prior speaker made. Um, looking back over notes from Article two, uh, the chair of the capital committee, I believe, said that there was 3 million in deferred maintenance in the sewer. Um, we just voted down 300,000 for the sewer. Uh, maybe the chair of capital can confirm, or maybe Scott can confirm if that 3 million backlog is a real thing. Uh, and my point here is that if we also turn this down, how much we're just pushing more and more on sewer and putting ourselves in a worse spot. You were there first.
Erica Hollister, 225 Middle Street. 225 Middle Street is one door up from the sewage treatment plant. And, uh, I just would like to say that for those of us and all of us, I think who like the rural nature of our town and the beautiful place that we live, that sewage treatment plant is a small plant. And, uh, Route nine is destined to be developed one way or another. That's probably not, not entirely out of our control, but it's, there's a lot of development pressure there. And we already know that the sewage treatment plant is aged, needs to be replaced and updated. We just, I don't know what not having a budget this year is going to do for them. That's kind of shocking to me. I don't know what the repercussions of that is going to be, but, um, I can tell you that, uh, the thought of having a massive new plant in our residential neighborhood, uh, is a little, is, is more than a little intimidating. I would much rather see that sewage going off to a plant that's already built, ready to receive it than to take our plant that is in a residential neighborhood, neighbored by an organic farm and, and two rivers, you know, what are we going to do there? Uh, make, make a huge sewage treatment plant? It's not, not great for the quiet little residential street that already has giant semis of sewage sludge moving up and down the street every single morning.
Dean Friedman, 16 Barstow Lane. I'd like to call the question.
Is there a second? Is there? Okay, there is a second. All right. Majority vote. All in favor of moving directly to a vote. Please raise your green cards. I see a sea of green out there. You can put those down. All those opposed. 196 to two. We are moving directly to a vote. All in favor of Article five, please raise your green card. You can put those down. All those opposed to Article five. I think we got to count. All right. Put those cards down. If you are in favor of Article five, please raise your green card. I can't recall the last time we had somebody count at one meeting. People are out. That's great. This is a majority. I stand corrected. It is a two thirds. It was marked majority, but it is a two thirds. Town council says two thirds per town meeting time. No. No, we, we, we're moving the question. We're voting on the article now. Yep. Right. That was a 196 to two. It is a simple majority. Okay. Simple majority. Mr. Moderator, I have 112. Same. You can put those down. No votes. Please raise your green cards. So just to reiterate, uh, the vote in Article five is a simple majority. Mr. Moderator, I have 78. Same. Article five passes. Article six, motion, move the town appropriate 415,505 from the water reserves for the purpose of replacing.
Can I just get a point of order?
Yes.
Why did we get, just an explanation? Why did we get two different? Why did the town council first say it was two thirds or just an explanation, please?
There was, I made a mistake about when someone says call the question to move directly to a vote, that's a two thirds of majority. I made the mistake and said simple majority, but it was 196 to two anyway. So that, that's definitely two thirds. All right. So I'm going to read the motion again. Um, Article six, move the town appropriate 415,505 from the water reserves for the purpose of replacing of the emergency backup generator for the water treatment plant at 129 Bay Road. Is there a second? Article six, Amy, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so this is an emergency procurement that's already been ordered. Um, this was done at the August 6th select board meeting. Um, and it was a emergency declaration, um, under Chief Spanknebel and the select board. Um, and it falls under the emergency management authority. So we've already financially done it. This is essentially a formality for the allocation of funds.
Want to re, restate that the select board recommends 500 and the finance committee recommends 400. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, move to a vote. All, this is a majority. All in favor of Article six, please raise your green cards. Thank you. You can put those down. All those opposed. And that's going to be unanimous, Jess. Yeah, they were still holding up from the yes here in the conversation. Article nine. No, wait a minute. Article eight, sorry. Seven. God, I want the night to be over. I'm hungry. Article seven, move the town transfer $30,000 from the free cash account to the town employee compensated time fund. Is there a second? Article seven, David Phil.
So when an employee retires and they have unused sick time or vacation time, in the past, we've had to scramble and find the money to pay them out for their retirement. We, a few years back, we set up a fund. So there was like a savings account to cover those retirement expenses. And this is adding money to that because we have a bunch of retirements coming up.
Select board recommends 500. Finance committee recommends 400. Any questions on Article seven? Seeing none, move to a vote. This is a majority. All in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. You can put those down. All those opposed. Uh, another unanimous one, Jess. All right. Now it's Article eight. Move the town authorize the select board to take or otherwise acquire Indian Pipe Road and any associated easements and to accept the same as a public way as laid out by the select board as further delineated in Article eight of the special town meeting warrant for October 23rd, 2025 incorporated herein. Is there a second? Molly, you're up. This is a two thirds vote, by the way.
Okay. Um, so for those of you who have been to town meetings before, you know that periodically we do these sorts of acceptances. Um, so this is for Indian Pipe Road. Um, and the, uh, we have done all of the requisite inspections. Uh, DPW has been out there along with somebody from, uh, Randy, did you go? Yep, with Randy. Um, and, uh, again, we're letting you know tonight that, that this road meets all of the requirements to be accepted as a town road. And we are asking you to do so this evening.
Any questions or comments on Article eight? This is a two thirds majority. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. All in favor, please raise your green cards. Thank you. You can put those down. All opposed. Two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. 190 to eight. That's more than a two thirds. Article eight passes. Article nine, move the town transfer $1,700 from the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund to the Hadley Historical Society for the preservation of a rare early 19th century broadside of the Declaration of Independence and to purchase an archival storage and display case for the 1590 storage and display case for the 1599 Goth, I'm pronouncing that right, Bible, under the terms delineated in Article nine of the Special Town Meeting warrant, October 25th, 2025, and incorporated by reference herein. Is there a second? This is a majority vote. And Mary? There you are. You're up.
Mary Thayer, 179 Hockenham Road. I'm Chair of the CPA Committee. The Hadley Historical Society is requesting funds for preservation of two important documents, artifacts in their collection. As mentioned, the first is a rare early 19th century broadside of the Declaration of Independence, which has some tears and staining and needs to be restored by a professional conservator. And they'd also like to purchase an archival storage and display case for the 1599, 1,599 a year Goth Bible, which was owned by the family of John Russell, who was Hadley's first minister and one of the founders of the town. The case would allow for the safe and secure display and proper storage of this rarely seen artifact. I would be on display at the Historical Society. So the total of the two is 1,700.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of Article nine, please raise your green cards. Thank you, you can put those down. All those opposed? That's unanimous, Jess. Article 10, the last one. Again, I just want to take a moment and say thank you to all the new faces that are here. This is your money being spent. Thank you for coming out. It's wonderful to see you. Motion, move the town transfer $16,000 in the Community Preservation Act Undesignated Fund to hire an archivist slash curator to organize and inventory the collection of the Hadley Historical Society and to make recommendations regarding the collection under the terms delineated in Article 10 of the Special Town Meeting warrant, October 23rd, 2025, and incorporated by reference herein. Is there a second? All right, second. Mary, you're back up.
Mary Thayer, 179 Hockenham Road. The Hadley Historical Society would work with this archivist and curator over a period of a year or so, 10 hours a week or so. And they want to have help in professionally managing and preserving the several thousand historic artifacts and multiple volumes of archival documents that they have in their collection. The archivist curator would help to better organize and inventory the collection and would identify and implement recommendations, recommendations for rehousing, restoring and/or archival storage of the collection items. And they'd make recommendations on how to do all of this. There was a 2025 strategic assessment report done for the Hadley Historical Society by the state's archivist, and this is one of the big things that was asked to be done.
Any questions or comments on Article 10? Seeing none, this is a majority vote, please raise your cards in favor. Thank you, you can put those down. All those opposed? Another unanimous, thank you, Jess. Hadley Mother's Club, Holiday Fair, November 22nd, here, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Do I have a motion to dissolve the meeting? Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you all for coming out. Thank you.